I want to bring this work session of the Hamilton.
Good afternoon, I want to bring the meeting to order, the work session for the Hamilton City School Board. Mr. Frazier, we call a roll.
Mrs. Baker.
Here.
Dr. Kopus.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
And I'll make a note in a minute that President Matthews and Vice President Davidson will be absent this evening.
Okay. I don't see anybody from city council tonight, or, and then next, Ms. Weisbro, our spotlight.
Microphone.
There we go. Good evening. Tonight, we have the pleasure to spotlight a couple of different folks. This, I'm going to start off by this past Tuesday, we celebrated Veterans Day to honor all those who have served our tremendous country. And this evening, I would like to recognize the veterans that who are our Hamilton City School staff members. We do have a couple that are in attendance that we're going to recognize in person, but I'm going to read off the list. My intention is to get around tomorrow morning individually to personally thank those folks that were unable to attend the board meeting tonight. Thank you for your service, Staff Sergeant Raymond Ortiz, Marines. Pat Elderton, Army. Jim Platt, Army. Rick Phillips, Army. Jeff Malakot, Navy. Joshua Sams, Navy. Jason Hodge, Army. David Graffner, Air Force. Carol Carlisle, Army. Don Coons, Army. Captain Scott Edberwine, Navy. Loretta Bryant, Army. And in attendance this evening, I'd like to recognize Amy Newman, please come on up, Army. And our very own Dr. Kopus, Army. Please give these folks a round of applause and thank you again for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Dr. Kopus?
Thank you very much.
Is Amy going to come up too?
She does.
Oh, good.
Army. I recognize him as well. Also, TV Hamilton, please make note, Dr. Stitzinger, served in Army as well.
You're in the middle, you're the star.
Yes. Thank you for your service.
All right, put my chairs back on, get this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Stitzinger, I have a question. Will you just induct it into all of the city Hamilton? Well, congratulations, I'm very proud of you, thank you for your service.
I really enjoyed that.
Well, good for you, you deserve that recognition.
Yeah, to Ms. Newman, Dr. Kopus, Dr. Stitzinger, as a wife of a veteran, I just want to thank you. I know the sacrifice that, you know, serving in our armed forces is, and I know the toll that it takes on not just the soldiers themselves, but also the family at large. And so, just from one veteran family to another, I want to thank you for what you do to all of our veterans. You know, it is, the price that we pay for the freedom does not come free. And so, I think that I'm just, I'm always blessed and so honored to be able to honor our, I know we have many veterans who couldn't be here tonight, but it is, it is unlike anything else. So, thank you from me and on behalf of our district for your service.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is doc, or doctor. Mr. Sprague is going to recognize former board members for their service.
Dr. Stitzinger, we get to do two thing, two recognitions for you tonight, so congratulations. As school board members, our goal is to make our Hamilton City Schools the best district possible. And so, doing our decisions have ramifications for years to come and the impact, and impact the educations of thousands of students and their families. Tonight, we have the honor to, we honor two men who have done just that and who combined serves Hamilton City Schools for 60 years. Now, I've done it eight years. And I look like this, so I can't imagine doing 60 or being that many years. Those 60 years included hours and hours of sacrifice on not only themselves, but their families to move our district forward. I've been fortunate to know both of these men for many years and had the honor to work with them on several occasions. I also know that they, along with George Johnson, who we've honored in the past, Dave Davidson, who's a current board member, and other board members during their time on the board, changed our district for years to come. My fellow board member, Dave Davidson, who I've said also served with these men, asks that the following be shared. First, we honor Glenn Stitzinger for 32 years of exceptional service on the Hamilton City School Board. Glenn has been a steady and thoughtful leader for more than three decades, and for more than three decades he was on the board, serving as board president nine times. Always, always placing our students and our community first. During Glenn's tenure, the district experienced a historic and transformational error, including the planning and construction of our new school buildings. His leadership and vision helped create the learning environments our students and educators benefit from every day. Glenn's commitment, his calm leadership, and his unwavering dedication to Hamilton City Schools have left a legacy that will endure for generations. On behalf of the district, our students, staff, and families, we offer our deepest appreciation, Glenn. Thank you for your service, your leadership, and your lasting impact on our community. Tonight, we also honor Larry Bowling for his 28 years of dedicated service on the Hamilton City School Board. Now, I don't have how many times you were present, Larry, 40, 50 times? No, no, how many times? You don't know, okay. Was it as many as, well, I won't let you, I'll let you guys fight over it. Okay. Over nearly three decades, Larry's leadership helped guide our district through a major period of transformation from the construction of new school buildings that now serve generations of students to continuous improvements in student performance and achievement. Anyway, I want to go off script for a second, if that's okay. And, you know, it's easy to say that they started, that they were part of, they were involved with the building of new buildings. And it's easy, but I lived through that time, I saw what you guys went through. I want to say in 1997, we passed a bond levy to help clean up our schools. Our schools in that time were, every one of them needed a new parking lot, they needed something, every single one of them, new cafeteria, a gym, all these things. And they passed it, which is very unusual in Hamilton, they passed a bond issue. Then, a year later, I still remember, we had signs up in all the, on all the different school properties saying what we were going to do. And the, the state came out with tobacco money. And we're like, well, we want that too. And lo and behold, we started, we did another campaign spearheaded by Larry and George and Glenn, and Dave was on there to ra, to, they went to state legislators and said, if we get another bond levy, will you count the bond levy we already passed? Am I correct on this, Larry? I think I'm telling this story right. And they, they created a, I don't know if it's a law, or they passed something that allowed us to take the money we had already earned through that bond levy and apply it to new buildings. Then we turned around and did another bond levy, it passed again, and I still remember being at Miami-Hamilton, and we're, we're keeping all our fingers and toes crossed, and we passed it. But that's only part of it. Then, we got all those, that money coming toward us, and they said, we want the best schools possible. And we went all through this state, finding the schools that exemplified what we wanted here in Hamilton. Then many, I know you guys went to a lot of schools, I remember going to schools with Glenn quite a few times, just to see what was out there, so we could have the very best here. And then we took the expertise of Mike Dingledine and drew up the plan, so all our schools are as equal as possible. That doesn't happen in a lot of districts. No matter where you go, each school is pretty much the same on the inside. So, when I say, when you say they helped with building the schools, their faces should be on the outside of the schools. No, I'm not. But, thank you guys for all you've done. So, I'll go back to script real fast. Larry has led with integrity, steadiness, and true commitment, true commitment to the families of Hamilton. The positive impact of his work will continue to be felt in our schools and our community for many years to come. On behalf of Hamilton City Schools, we extend our deepest gratitude. And Larry, thank you for your service, your leadership, and your lasting legacy. Gentlemen, we are very happy to honor you tonight for all that you've done for our schools. For that, and let's do a. You're shocking. So, we have two plaques here. One for Glenn, it says, "Thank you for your contributions to Hamilton City Schools, 1986 to 2017. Leadership is the capacity to translate a vision into reality." Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Larry, thank you for your contributions to Hamilton City Schools from 1988 to 2015. Leadership is the capacity to translate a vision into reality. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a surprise. The hardest part of that building project for us was all the trips we made to Columbus to get the rules changed. That was just, that was tough. And we were told it never would happen, but we got mad enough times and it, it, it was a wonderful thing, it affected two school districts, our district, I forget who the other one was, but it was retroactive, so that, because we would have had a hard time transferring, making that happen with a new vote. Just, I don't think it would ever happen. I was thinking a little bit about during our time, what was the most successful adventure we took? And obviously, the schools were tops, but hiring Janet Baker and Bob Hancock were two of our better accomplishments. They led us for most of our 20, most of the years we were here. And anyway, thank you, it was a pleasure serving. And I try to follow what's going on, and I think you guys are doing a good job.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We wanted to see if we could get a picture, maybe kind of as we start leaving, we can get a picture with our current board up here, and we'll let you guys kind of work towards, so.
We double check before.
Get it, babe?
I'm trying.
Oh, one more, okay.
One more.
Lynn, look over here.
All right, we got this.
All right. Well, thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your service and setting us up.
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Happy for all of you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, thanks.
Happy to see you.
Long time, huh?
Yeah, still here.
Good to see you, still here.
Congratulations, guys, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking. Thank you. Yep, this is your.
Thank you so much. You guys be safe getting home, okay?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. No problem. We do this all the time. We're always on the go. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sprague, for taking care of that. It was a very well-deserved recognition of two outstanding former board members. Next, Mr. Frazier, we've got an economic development project.
Thank you. This evening, you have in front of you some summary TIF CRA legislation. So, as we've done in the past, you have a summary sheet, we have some pictures of a future development, as well as a copy of a school compensation agreement that we'll have with the city, and then the facts and figures behind the numbers there at the back. This is a project that the city has been working on for quite some time. Matter of fact, we had to dig up the legislation there from last year around this time. It's a hotel project at the corner of Martin Luther King and High Street. It's two hotels. It's a Home to Suites and a Hampton Inn. There have been a few updates since last year. Last year, at this point in time, we were talking about a $20 million project. Just received an update from Jody Gunderson that that number is now a $35 million project with approximately 160 to 180 rooms. So, large project. The project includes a 30-year TIF, also a 15-year 100% CRA. We have negotiated a make-whole agreement, which means after the CRA falls off, the school district will receive all property tax dollars it should have received had the TIF not been in place. There's also enough money in the deal where we are able to recoup some of those dollars that were lost during the CRA period, which I think is very important. Also, in the deal, we've agreed to split the income tax generated from the project 50-50 with the city. And again, it's, right now, that is a, that area is a parking lot. And it is a city-owned property, which means we get zero property tax dollars off of it. Again, we are always conservative in our numbers for these projects, but with very slow growth and no increase projected for income tax over the period, that looks like almost eight and a half million dollars for the district over the 30-year life of the TIF. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
But to clarify, we would not receive any money until, well, other than a little bit of income tax, right?
Until the CRA falls off.
15 years.
For 15 years.
This is long-term planning.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and, you know, as we talk, every project's different. Every developer's different, what they need to make that project go. This is what the developer has asked for. We've approved, you know, 10-year 75% CRAs, we've approved 12-year 60% CRAs. So, it's really, every project's unique, what developers asking for. In this case, again, there is no debt in the deal, which is very important to us, because debt always takes first priority. If there is any municipal issued debt in the deals, a lot of times, there's not, nothing left for, for the schools in that case. So, we are in priority one in this case, but the monies will not be, you know, granted to us until after that CRA falls off. So, yes, very good point.
Jeremy, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
In this project, if I remember, what way, what way goes away, actually? Am I correct?
Well, that, that is part of it, although there, I believe there is another development coming to the other parking lot that would sit just to the right of that.
Okay.
And there's some logistical issues with that, so I don't know that that's 100% for certain as we sit here now.
And then, was there something about, like a noise or a quiet zone with the?
Correct, and that's, that's part of that revenue split after the CRA falls off. We are splitting the excess TIF revenues after the CRA falls off. So, when that falls off, we get what we would have gotten anyway, and then we are splitting the rest with the city. Our piece is to make up for what we've given up during the CRA period, and the city's piece is to help finance and pay for that quiet zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do they have a timeline at all right now on breaking ground or anything like that?
I believe, I believe that's supposed to be sometime in the spring or summer. I mean, that's, basically, the city reached back out and said, hey, this thing is really moving now. We've gotten our safety checks done for that parking lot, and that's, that's what they were waiting on, some grant dollars and those things to make sure that the area was safe to build on. That's been done, and I believe the developer's ready to, ready to roll. So, as soon as we do our piece, which unless I hear some objections, I would have the actual legislative language on for the December meeting. As soon as that's done, the city's going to pass it and be ready to, to roll. So, I think it's going to be relatively quick.
It certainly is going to make a nice entranceway for the city to have that not be a blank parking lot.
Another stimulus.
The images look completely different.
Yeah, it will.
If you see the images, they look completely different than what, than what's there now.
It will be very nice.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Frazier? Okay. Next, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. We will go into executive session. Thank you.
Couple of years ago, we had a plan that we wanted to work with a company to start designing a cafeteria that was different than your typical school cafeteria. We wanted it to feel more like a food court and less like your typical long tables, benches, rows. So, we wanted some different types of seating in there. The response has been wonderful, not just from the students, but also from the community. We've had lots of adults in here, an open house. We've had other jealous teachers from other buildings that have been telling us how great it looks. So, we've had a wonderful response, honestly.
It feels more like when we went to Miami, we just got to sit in their cafeteria, and it felt just more like mature. And so, it just is really cool that our cafeteria is a lot like that.
The kids are doing better this year, like from last year. We always would get up, scream across the whole lunchroom, because you couldn't sit with like all your friends. It's like kind of a small space, but now it's like a bigger space, more tables. You can just sit and eat with your friends, be comfortable. It's a very big change from last year.
I feel like it's very comfortable, the students enjoy eating there while talking to their friends. They really seem to like the new changes that were made this year.
We tried to bring not just Garfield in here, but also the city of Hamilton. We brought in Hamilton things from around our community, including some maps of the neighborhoods that our kids come from.
It makes you feel like you're being part of the community and enjoying the places that are important.
I'm just so glad that we get to share this with our students. I'm so glad they get to enjoy it, and I just love making Garfield even better.
As a new principal at Hamilton High School, I was really thinking about this Hamilton-Baden game and how we could make this a community celebration, but really, at the core of the Baden mission is service to our community, and that's always been an important part of what my passion is in education. So, whether it's working with 17 Strong and micro grants with our youth, or just getting out in the community and doing cleanups. We really wanted to launch something that was bigger than the football game, something where our kids give back to the community. Some of them are actually throwing stuff in the dumpster right now, helping out Ms. Ebony, the executive director at BTW. And then we have boys out in the community, walking the streets, picking up trash.
So, over the summer, we had the, the opportunity to meet with Hamilton High's administration and, and just talk about this game. This game's such an awesome opportunity for both schools to showcase really what we believe, what we're all about. And in meeting with Ty and talking, we wanted to do something to make our community better, to bring our, our two football teams that, that obviously are competing to win, win football games, but more importantly, we wanted to come together to, to serve the community. In the midst of a rivalry week, that we're working together to make things better. I think that, you know, when I look at, you know, our guys and Hamilton's guys, there's so many little faces in those crowds, little kids that look up to them, I mean, they see them as celebrities at times. And just to inspire in them a desire to, to be more than just what they are on the football field. I mean, they're leaders in our community, they're doing great things. And I think the opportunity to showcase that, really to inspire hopefully some other people to get involved in 17 Strong, here at the Booker T. Washington Center, to get involved here, which are great organizations that need, need people like this to come out and serve and make the place better.
And it's just really, to me, signifies kind of a new launch of service to our community for both of our schools, for Baden and for Hamilton. So, it was great to see everybody out in their jerseys. It is Hamilton versus Baden Friday night, but right now, everybody's working together to make our community a better place.
Arrow is the Hamilton City Schools District's first therapy dog. She is certified through the AKC as a certified therapy dog. She is here for our students and our staff and is just a part of our, the Hamilton community.
And I'm just so impressed with her poise. She is so well-trained and just does a great job already to lighten all of our moods. I couldn't be thankful enough to. I, I couldn't be thankful enough to Leadership Hamilton, Hamilton Community Foundation, and the Pauls and Stripes College for preparing such an amazing partner. We couldn't have asked for a better dog.
I know Andrea just saw the benefit and all the research that was behind how therapy dogs make a solid impact with students, you know, through attendance and grades and behavior. And she did a lot of research herself and brought it to the team and wanted to take the project on.
And this is one proactive strategy that local communities are using to help build resilience, kindness, positivity. There's a lot of research out there about how a therapy dog will lower anxiety and stress, which so many of our young people and our staff are facing on a day-to-day basis. Our goal is to get a dog for each of our buildings. As you know, there's a lot of needs that go around, and Arrow is just one. We're a very large district. And so our goal is to onboard four or five dogs a year that would allow us to eventually get there in the next few years to a dog per school. That will allow that dog to become really a, a part of that school culture. Through community donations, through different agencies, we've been able to raise the money completely so that not one district dollar is being used for this.
She's calm, mild-mannered, just very sweet, very gentle, listens very well. A lot of love, a lot of love, a lot of happiness, a lot of energy behind it, which is great.
Welcome, everybody, to Garfield Middle School. My name is Josh Marjoram. I'm the principal here at Garfield. Tonight, we are here to commemorate a legendary coach, teacher, and family man from the Hamilton community, Coach Tim Reed. I was fortunate, yeah. I was fortunate enough to have played for Coach Reed, as I'm sure many of you in the crowd were. We often talk about how many wins coaches have or how many years they coached, but typically, we don't hear many stories or talk about what really matters, which is the lessons that coaches teach their players that go beyond sports. One thing that sticks out to me that I still bring up to this day is a conversation I had with Coach Reed in high school. He was talking about how important it was that we are good people and not just good players. Of course, he had his own way to explain this. He said, "Marjoram, it's not about the X's and the O's, it's about the Jimmy's and the At, at that time, I just thought that was funny, but I, I didn't understand what he was really saying. And since then, I've thought a lot about that frequently in my day-to-day work. Without a good group of people around me to support me, I would not have been as successful in life. The people we have on our team and life are the most important teammates we will have. Coach Reed was not just a great coach, but a great person. I'm sure many of us in this room are glad he was on our team. I would now like to welcome up our next speaker to the podium. Please help me give a warm welcome to Coach Reed's son, Jimmy Reed.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for coming on the behalf of my family. My mother, Diane Reed, my sister Shannon Reed, my grandma Willa Reed, my uncle Wes Reed. It is incredible seeing everyone come together to celebrate this special moment. As many of you already know, our dad was a very humble man, and he would have a hard time accepting all of this being done on his behalf. Dad spent thirty-two years teaching, and his efforts have made a lasting impact on many lives. This was very apparent with the outpouring of love from the community since his passing. He left his mark on many people's hearts, and we are all better for knowing Tim Reed. Our family would like to thank Josh Marjoram and the, the principal here at Garfield and the Board of Education for making all of this possible. Also, we would like to thank the community for keeping his memory alive and sharing with us the impact that he left on the hearts of everyone that came into contact, contact with him. He is truly missed. I was going through some pictures the other day, and I came across some statements made about my father I'd like to share with you. A quote from Walter Vickers. "I started teaching at Garfield in nineteen eighty-five along with Tim. We coached basketball together the years I was in Hamilton. Like everyone who knew Tim in any manner, I was immediately impressed by his kindness, calmness, and genuine care for all people. Tim was a treasure for all students he served at Hamilton. I know that words cannot express how good things about my father and that, I know that words cannot express good things about my father and that left..." Sorry, guys. Okay. "I know that words cannot express good things about my father and that the life he led. We pray that future scholars and student athletes see his name on the court and become curious and inspired. I know I may be biased, but my dad was a pretty awesome guy. This floor dedication truly gives him the recognition that he deserves. His incredible legacy will live on with this floor dedication and the Tim Reed Scholarship that has been made in his memory." Can the board members please stand up on, of the scholarship legacy fund? You guys, you guys do an awesome job with everything you do. As many of you know, there is a legacy fund created in dad's memory. Since 2019, the Coach Tim Reed Legacy Fund has provided over thirty-five scholarships to college-bound seniors from Tallawanda High School and Hamilton High School. Coach Reed exemplified the traits associated with outstanding teacher and coach. Honesty, integrity, loyalty, respectfulness, responsibility, humility, compassion, and fairness were all strong principles and core values that Coach Reed modeled daily when interacting with his students, coworkers, players, and people. Our hope is that the floor dedication reaches the community of Hamilton and inspires the young students. His legacy will live on for many years to come, and we are very appreciative of everyone that made this happen.
At this time, I would like to bring up Ms. Diane Reed, and also Coach Reed's mother, and also city council member Tim Nab for a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We would like to welcome you for the first time to Coach Reed Court. Okay, before we conclude, and I am going to let everybody walk around and talk, because I know you guys want to do that. Before we conclude, I just need to thank a few people for helping make this event possible. All of our Hamilton City School officials, including those who brought these giant scissors, please give them a round of applause for supporting this. I would also like to thank our Hamilton City Schools Superintendent, Ms. Andrea Blevins, and our school board members who supported this event. Please stand so everybody knows who you are, so we can give them a round of applause. Have to thank Mr. Kilby, Mr. Jeff Kilby, Mr. Tom Schuler, and all of our custodians who worked behind the scenes with the company who completed this project. They did a wonderful job. I would be remiss not to thank the person that runs this gym, Mr. Jimmy Sizemore, for helping me design all this and staying involved the entire time. Shout out to Jimmy Sizemore. Of course, I'd like to thank Ms. Diane Reed and Coach Reed's entire family for helping make this night possible and always supporting our schools. And finally, I feel like I'm giving an award speech or something. Finally, most importantly, I'd like to thank Coach Reed for his patience and for always taking care of the Jimmy's and the Joe's. Thank you, guys, for coming out today. Thanks, Coach Reed, and feel free to hang around, grab some waters out front, and converse.
Welcome, everyone, to the Hamilton City Schools regularly scheduled meeting. It's Thursday, November thirteenth. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
In the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now need a motion to appoint a president pro temp for this meeting.
I make a motion that Mrs. Baker become the president pro temp.
I second the motion.
I'll now call the roll. Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Next on the agenda, I need an approval for our agenda for this evening.
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Frazier, would you call the roll?
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Next, we need an approval of the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
I second.
Oh, sorry, any discussion? I do have a question. I was not at the, the meeting. Should I abstain?
No, you, you are perfectly fine to vote for it.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay. Mr. Frazier?
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Okay, no public participation. Superintendent Blevins?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Baker. Just a few updates this evening. One, I just want to remind our families that this time of year brings a lot of hustle and bustle like no other. As we head indoors and the days can feel shorter, just remember that we still try to take our kids outside as often as possible, and so sending kids with a, with warm clothes or a coat. If you need any help accessing those things, just reach out to the school office, and we can help to do that. It's also a great time, as we are almost halfway through the second quarter, to check your child's grades on ABRE. You know, we have our massive push. I was actually very excited to hear we have about five thousand parents connected to our ABRE parent portal with immediate access, full-time, twenty-four-seven access to grades and different pieces. So just a great time to, to visit those. We also have a series of mini-community outreach events coming up, including this Saturday, or this Sunday, our Hamilton High students are hosting a Bengals watch party at Markham Park from twelve to four. Hopefully, we'll get a win, maybe, maybe. We also have Hamlet Turkey, which many of our families are chosen to receive full meals during the week of Thanksgiving. And then the Saturday after Thanksgiving, on Saturday, November, I'm off on my date there, I think it's the twenty-ninth, we'll have Hamilton Welcomes the Holidays with a canned food drive, lights, and free crafts for kids. It was a great time last year, so I just encourage our families to join. Put more information about that in the community newsletter that went out earlier this month. I also, just one more piece that I wanted to take a moment to invite all of our staff and community to a series of community forums that we're having next week. Those will take place on Wednesday at Garfield Middle School. There will be one at three-thirty PM and one at five-thirty PM. And then on Thursday, November twentieth, same times, three-thirty and five-thirty, but at Hamilton High School. Those conversations will really center on helping everyone understand the state funding model for public education. I know many of our board members have talked about the changes, and also what that means for Hamilton and, and what the future of our district looks like to make sure that we have strong schools. As this is our only board meeting this month, my last comment before reviewing the agenda items is just to remind all of our families that we will not have school the week of November twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. We wish all of our families, staff, and students a restful and bountiful, happy Thanksgiving.
Yep. Thank you, Mrs. Blevins. Believe, any, any other comment? Okay. Next on the agenda, I believe everybody's had a chance to review the fall policy update. This will be the final read, so I need a recommendation for approval.
Recommend approval.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Frazier?
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the human resources agenda. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
I second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Frazier?
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there an item B under? Okay. Consent agenda, I need an approval for the consent agenda.
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Frazier?
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Next, Mr. Frazier, finance agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. This evening, we have a few items up for your approval. We have the normal treasure reports. We also have, again, a significant, a significant number of donations. We have eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars from the ANVETS to NJROTC. We have a hundred and forty-dollar donation to Garfield Middle School. And we also have a thousand dollars from the Hamilton High School boosters to Hamilton High School athletics. It is also that time of year where we approve the Lane Library appointment to their Board of Directors. Ms. Brenda Dale's term expires the end of this year, and we had an applicant, Ms. Connie Malone, apply for that, and so we would like to approve her this evening. The appointment's a four-year term, starting January one of twenty-six and running through December thirty-one of twenty-nine. And then we also have a, a resolution there in the middle of the finance agenda to approve for expenditures for board member elects to attend the Capitol Conference. And so I would like to have that up for approval this evening, and those are my finance agendas.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I need a motion to approve the finance agenda.
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Frazier?
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Okay. Our next meeting will be Thursday, December eleventh, beginning at four PM here at the board office. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And I second.
Meeting's adjourned.